And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody today, those of you who have come, we appreciate it. Judy will not be with us today, she's in Indianapolis today, or she's? Yeah. So, anyway, Michael, I'll turn it over to you to start our agenda.
Uh, Mr. Dillon is here, excuse me, from Vigo County Platt mapping, he has a petition to vacate an alleyway he'd like for you to consider.
Uh, yes, we have a petition to vacate an alley in Maryland subdivision, uh, behind Collins Plaza down on South Seventh, just north of Thompson Ditch. Um, apparently with expansion, he's wanting to put a parking lot back behind, which would necessitate the closure of the alley. He does own both parcels on, on either side, so it doesn't affect really any alley that ends at Thompson Ditch.
Wayne, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
It's just because of necessity because of Seven Street area. Uh, we have seven seven parking spaces to go down to tomorrow, eighty-four feet.
Yeah.
Trying to park, make this, make this, park some across the street, church.
Yeah, that's kind of a pain to cross, uh, Seventh Street there to walk across there. Okay. All right. I've looked at it and spoke with Mr. Collins, been down there and looked at it myself, and uh, we understand the predicament you're in there and you own the property that's adjacent and it's all together there. So, uh, if I could have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the vacation of the alley.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Wayne.
Uh, the next item on the agenda was the, uh, execution of the letter of support in pursuit of Ivy Tech's, in support of Ivy Tech's pursuit of a next level trails grant. The letter reads, "As Vigo County Commissioners, we are writing in full support of the Ivy Tech Community College Chairhold Campus Proposal for the Indiana State Next Level Trails Grant. As local elected officials, we believe in investing in our community to increase connectivity between communities and our overall quality of life for Vigo County residents. We strongly support this grant application, its focus on outdoor learning experiences, accessibility and collaboration with the Vigo County Parks and Recreation Department. We look forward to seeing the impact of your proposal on the southern part of Vigo County."
If you'd state your name and rank and serial number.
All right. Adam Grossman, Superintendent, Vigo County Parks. Uh, thank you for your time today, and, uh, as you well know, we're building Ruble Park there in Southern Vigo County, uh, very close proximity to Ivy Tech's campus there, and, uh, we're developing a wonderful working relationship there. And, um, through that relationship, uh, development of this grant application, uh, and connectivity with a lot of different opportunities. So, uh, with me today is representatives here from Ivy Tech, and I'll let them speak more about the project.
Good morning, I'm Leanne Crooks, I'm the Chancellor at Ivy Tech. Thanks for having us. So about ten years ago, we started the development behind, at the back of, end of our property with, um, Indiana trees, with the thought process that we wanted to have outdoor learning space and walking trails around those trees and to connect in with our neighbors in that area. Um, so the project, as, as you can imagine, was state funding, it's just kind of evolved over time, and, and, um, then about two years ago, we started working with the Parks Department with the development of Ruble Park, and the, the idea started percolating as far as how we could connect together. Um, so we had worked with them and talked about the, the, um, potential of utilizing our property for the trailhead space, as well as development of restrooms on the back part of our, of our land there. Um, we explored different opportunities as far as usage of our restrooms, and, and it really seems best that we build back in the back there. Um, so, just recently, when the next level, um, trails grant became available, it just seemed like the natural next step for us to partner together. Um, this would allow us to then expand our area with outdoor learning environment, help us connect with our neighbors. As you know, we have, um, a couple of good potential neighbors to connect in, and then allow us to build the restrooms and finish the trailhead for Ruble Park. So we're really excited about the fact that, um, you have already committed to supporting Southern County development with Ruble Park and with, with the Griffin Bike Park, and so we just think that this is the next step for us, so we appreciate, um, you considering the support.
We appreciate you guys stepping up and being part of this. It's a great thing down there, and it'll, it'll show be a, you know, a savings to the county, uh, to be able to get part of that grant and be able to do that.
Yep.
We sure appreciate it.
Chancellor, when do you, um, if this grant goes through, when do you anticipate it being open?
Well, I, you know, the grant, um, I'm, it's due in October, but I'm, I'm not sure when the award is. Can you help me with that, Rachel?
Rachel Monix, Ivy Tech Executive Director for the Foundation. Uh, so, the grant application would open in October, deadline is November first, and then the awarding of the funding will be in, uh, early January or mid to early January. Uh, we anticipate then that along with Ruble Park's, uh, anticipated spring opening, that we would be able to work pretty quickly on the development. Uh, the restrooms and the trailhead are number one priority as the, um, for the, the totality of the project, but I would anticipate that it would maybe take twelve to eighteen months to get the entirety of the project finished.
Are the restrooms modular, like what you did, Adam, at the other parks?
Yes.
And so water and everything's already there?
With the locking mechanism. Well, that's the, the.
Could be.
Sorry. The, the electrical and the water, we have to get out there with the, the electrical, we have lighting out there, close to it, so we think the electrical is less, we will have to get the water, um, but we were, have we looked, I'm sorry, our, my last discussion, we were looking to see if it was closer on the road, Jessica Drive, versus if it's closer on our property, so. Do we know that yet? It's our property. Okay, so it's our property, so we'll have to get the water out there, but that's in the project.
And then it'll be yours, it won't be ours, that we're maintaining, right, Adam?
Yeah, we've got an agreement to maintain.
So we are going to maintain it?
Well, their, their staff will maintain, and we're going to help with supplies and things like that.
Okay.
That'll be on Ivy Tech property.
Then if the grant doesn't go through, are we still moving forward with it?
We're still trying to figure out how we're going to do it, if, um, it, the actual development of the back area for us is part of a capital campaign that we are actually in the process of. So, um, we had been talking about different partnerships on how to get to that point, so the grant, the grant's key. Um, the good thing about it is there's another round of this grant, so they're really good about critiquing the grant once we submit, um, so we're hopeful that if we don't get it in this round, maybe the next round they'll consider it.
Well, Rachel's been giving me a lot of updates on it, and I'm pretty excited about this, but there's so many people, Adam, that have been wanting to go out there and hike and explore the property, and I know we need to have restrooms out there, so, um, I appreciate the partnership.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to sign the letter.
Second to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And, Adam, I guess, can people go out there now?
Yeah.
Okay. Then are you looking for volunteers to do the trail work at all?
We'll give that one a bit.
Okay. So your goal is to have it open to public in the spring?
Late spring.
Early summer? Is still no hunting?
Right now, um, we're looking at that, it's, uh, it's not, things like that.
Okay. Are those hunts firearms or archery only?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, we, firearms, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, if you're, uh, permitted, uh, it's, uh, down the road here, uh, it's a problem.
Okay, so, so right now, if people are out there, they're technically trespassing. Okay. Yeah, are you going to have mountain bike trails out there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, we are doing another test run for the broadcast, so we're kind of talking, um, I talk, um, very little, um, as you guys know, so I'm talking more than normal, because we're trying, the guys are in there working on getting this going, so. Thank you, President, Commissioner Brad Anderson. Brad.
Aye.
Anderson.
Michael, what else do we have?
Uh, the next item, uh, is in regards to the Vigo County Treasurer's Office. Nancy, you want to come up? This is a service agreement with Heartland to perform, uh, government merchant processing. Nancy explained to me in discussing this yesterday that, uh, she has seen the software and feels good about this merchant's ability to deliver the reports that she needs to accurately reconcile.
Yes, our reconciliation clerk has a nightmare with point and pay, finding all the credit card transactions and stuff, it's just a nightmare, and Heartland's got, it explains everything right there, what each one of them is and everything, so it's going to make it much easier for him to reconcile the books, and then the interest rate is cheaper too, so it's 2.35, where point and pay charges us 2.50 right now.
For transaction rate?
Well, not for us, but for the customer, yes, yeah.
What's your system now?
It's point and pay.
No, I mean, you have, you have one vendor, right?
One vendor.
And who is that vendor?
You mean?
Who do you use now to handle your credit card transactions?
Point and pay.
Point pay?
Yeah, point pay.
Okay, and then you're charging a user fee now?
They are charging a user fee of 2.50.
Two dollars and fifty cents?
Fifty cents, a percentage, two dollars, two.
So if. If it's a thousand dollars, I'm paying twenty-five bucks.
Right.
To use a credit card?
Yep.
And that's standard?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, it, the, when you're collecting taxes, we have to collect the full amount of the tax.
Sure.
So, we can't pay any service fee or processing fee, it's all user provided, um, and it's a reflection of how much they're paying on that card.
That, we just, we've taught, we talked about this a little bit this morning, but we've had many conversations about consistency and lack thereof, I mean, each department has their own credit card processing system, and I, I thought we were making some headway with tracking down one vendor to do everything, but, um, it, that does this, if we move forward with this, does that disrupt that?
I don't. It could be such that, uh, this, the Treasurer's Office is peculiar because of the property tax situation. So, um, I don't know that any local banking institutions would have the software that Nancy's contemplating.
Okay.
That she needs to accurately reconcile the credit card transactions that are probably, I mean, according to this total, you know, it's over 1.5 million.
And they work with Thompson Reuters, you know, they integrate them.
Yeah, that's what I was going to add, is it, it works on.
Commissioner Bramble.
The URL website that you've got?
Yes, yes.
So it, I, I think that, talking about the other departments that have.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
Permits and things like that, that they want to take credit cards for, I think first, Financial or Old National Bank or Fifth Third or any of those institutions could handle that sort of.
Okay, this is unique.
This is a little different in that it's, uh, she's got to account for where that fee is, it's broken down into escrow accounts essentially for each parcel, and that's what Heartland says they can deliver, is a report individualized on each parcel.
That shows where the fee went.
Exactly.
Okay.
And they work with the MVP anyway, so when they, they collect all the money, and we go in and we make sure it's into the bank, they give us a folder, and we just drop it in, and it goes through MVP to the right parcels who paid what.
Okay.
And that communicates with you?
Okay.
So.
And then we just have to approve the contract?
I, it's, uh, yes, yeah, I mean, the, uh.
You got anything else?
It has a provision for electronic checks that's considerably cheaper than credit cards.
Dollar fifty flat rate.
Dollar fifty flat rate, so you can pay your entire property tax bill with an electronic check for a dollar fifty.
Okay.
The credit card, as Nancy indicated, is a standard percentage of the payment, a little less than what we're paying.
So does this allow people to pay their property taxes online now?
Oh, yeah.
And so that's already set up?
It, I'm wanting to get it set up for the fall, so we can get it running smooth, so we, in the spring, it'd be great.
Then are you using a separate vendor for the online payment?
No, same one.
So they offer that service too?
Yes.
So if I go on, I can go on to your page on the county website?
Right.
Pay my taxes, click on it, do everything through here, and they're going to charge me the two point.
Yeah.
Five, five percent fee on top of it?
Right.
And I'm done. Or I can do a wire transfer for a dollar fifty.
Yeah, for a dollar fifty, yeah.
Cool.
You okay with that?
Are we getting caught up with the times now?
Yeah.
That's.
On our way.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we had a lot of ACHs coming back with the other company, so I shut that off, and this company kind of guarantees that that won't happen, you know, because they make sure that all of the numbers are, that matches, they counts.
I'd entertain a motion if you have no more questions.
Can, can you come, ask them how we would handle a situation if we have another ransomware attack or if our system's shut down?
Okay, I will do that.
And just, just figure out, like, if we have a day or two disruption, what are our options on making sure that we can still process through?
Okay.
All right, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
And Adam, you don't have your credit card system in place yet, I would assume?
I, yeah, number one.
Okay.
Michael, do you have anything else for us?
I do not, sir, thank you.
This time, I'll turn it over to the auditor.
We've got, um, minutes for the, um, September nine three zoning meeting to be approved, and the minutes for, um, last Tuesday's September tenth meeting.
Do you need to say it again?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the September ninth meeting?
Motion's made, I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
September tenth meeting. Oh, you want me to do this one too?
Yeah. We got two of them.
Did you talk about that one already?
Yep.
Nope.
No, it wasn't. Make a motion to approve the September tenth minutes.
Motion made, I'll second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion carries. Thank you. Go to claims.
We've got the claim docket for August thirty-first through September sixth, in the amount of five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-four cents.
I'll beat you on that one.
I didn't see anything that I questioned.
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Motion's made, I'll second the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries to approve claims.
It's been a nice meeting so far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Working well.
Yeah, good. I like Michael's beard.
All right. Any comments from the elected officials? Officers, management, not open it up to the public?
Can I bring Vicki up for a second?
You may.
Can I put you on the spot, Vicki? Okay.
You're going to anyway.
Dun dun dun.
Doesn't matter.
Then since we're doing the trial run on this name, title, and stuff like that.
Vicki Oster, Vigo County, nine-one-one, uh, Director.
National Night Out?
National Night Out is Thursday.
Thursday? What are you guys doing?
Uh, we are going to be, uh, in the canopy with the Sheriff's Department, um, they have some, um, I think, like, fingerprint packets and things like that for kids to give out, and we have, um, some nine-one-one stickers, and then we have, um, some pencils and erasers that we're giving out.
Smart nine-one-one?
No, it's for kids.
No, I, I just random thought.
Yeah.
Where are we on that? With, you're pushing that program, right?
Yes.
Am I calling it the right thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, we have, I've talked to a couple of the fire departments, um, uh, one in Otter Creek, think they're wanting to come down and, uh, get some, uh, business cards and things to hand out to people to sign up. Um, they were wanting that to be put in our CAD, but it's, it would be just too much for us to keep track of everybody that was there and when they move and any changes or anything like that, so I told them their best bet would be the smart nine-one-one, so they're supposed to come down and get some business cards to pass out to people in their district.
Okay.
To sign up for.
And the NICSOL system is still in place, so if people want to get updates, they need to register with the NICSOL program?
Yes, NICSOL, we do on our, um, like, weather-related or traffic incidents, things like that, we do on our Facebook page for nine-one-one, and then we also send out alerts to people that have signed up for it.
And I, I will share with the group that, um, Vicki and I worked on a project within the last two weeks, I was up in the Fountainhead area for a, a community listening session, and there were some concerns about response times with a private ambulance vendor, so we worked on efficiencies with that, and I think things will be a lot better, so it's, it's a, an ever-evolving system as the technology improves on ways to make things more efficient, so, um, you've done a remarkable job on getting things where we need to be, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else you want to share?
No, that's it, National Night Out, Thursday, five to, five to eight.
At.
Fairbanks Park.
Same time as the Human Relations Dinner.
Is that it?
And about five other events, so.
Yeah.
You, you guys have something going on too that night? Are you really? Ivy Tech doing something cool? Dual credit night?
All right.
Is that like my best pro points, if I buy something, I get extra points, so if you take a class that night, you get extra credits? I'm signing up, man.
All right, thank you all for coming.
That's it? Oh, we skipped that, didn't we?
No, you, you jumped in.
I jumped in, can we do, can we go back to public comment?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yes.
How's the recording going in there, guys?
Michael, you saw twenty-one forty-seven, Poplar Street?
Yeah, all right, time's up.
Um, something came up about, uh, what was the problem with, if you could just let people know what happened with the ransomware and what actions we are taking to mitigate that happening again?
Can we touch on something real quick on that, or do you want to do it?
No.
The, um, we had a meeting yesterday, um, with the head of IT, um, some people from the state about the exercise, um, and it was really neat to see what was affected. Um, what I got out of that was how we can, um, tighten that up for when it does happen again, because I'm confident it will, um, what kind of measures we have in place to, to help mitigate that. We did have something hit, oh, I, was it Friday night or Monday? Jeremy got a hit at like two-thirty in the morning, but the weird part was, what hit us was initiated by the vendor, we have two vendors that are monitoring our service, and I'm not going to get this entirely accurate, um, but basically it was kind of like a testing, it worked out well, it showed that we were engaged in our process, and we got something stopped that really wasn't even there, if that makes sense. It, it was a false alarm, but more than likely it was probably a targeted false alarm by the vendor, and we handled it really well, so, um, we've learned that a lot of our machines were on Win, or Windows-based from years ago.
Windows seven, I heard.
And maybe even older now, some, so we've replaced a lot of those units. Um, I know Michael's been heavily involved with getting total cost for the insurance claim.
Yeah, there's been, I think every, uh, three-hundred-and-ninety-four, is the last number I recall, uh, they've all been updated to Windows ten, which has this glitch fix for the REO virus, apparently is what hit here, and, um, yeah, I think the incident that Brendan described, right, that vendor that is verifying that it was a cyber attack, had folders with that virus in it that our vendor caught, so, uh, and that wasn't any sort of threat, but it was more a test to see that capabilities are still there, so, it's, you know, as Brendan said, there's no guarantee that it won't happen again, I think, uh, you know, a lot of people are apparently making money doing it, and, and as long as that's happening, it's going to keep happening, so.
Well, it's great to hear that we're being proactive instead of just waiting for something to happen.
Yeah.
And then the other thing, if you could, um, you've explained it to me a lot, but if you could just explain again what it will be like when you start live streaming, where people can go, and what that process will be?
For sure, we're going to have a county YouTube channel, I know that, but as far as, we haven't really talked, so the Commissioners have our own Facebook page. So we have a Vigo County Commissioners. The Council does not, and, and you may recall, I tried to do that, well, it, that went sideways, so that'll be up to them as far as how they handle that, but as far as Commissioners go, we can work on how we can do that. Um, we don't handle that Facebook page internally, we have somebody that does it for us, we have to coordinate that, but the goal is, first of all, to see how all this works, get it up on the YouTube channels, channel, so it's always archived there, um, and then livestream it, hopefully through our Commissioner's channel.
On Facebook.
On Facebook, yeah.
Because that would be excellent, because then people would, could go there, you know, every Tuesday.
Yeah, because I know that, there's a lot of people, Mike, that are sitting around on Tuesday mornings that are thinking, man, I really wish I could watch a Commissioners meeting right now.
That's what I hear too, they call me every time.
Right, this is, this is, we're going big, man, this is going to be a big deal.
CNN better watch that.
Yeah, I'm going to get a, uh, we're going to get new, new shirts, um, I'll get my logo, and, uh, yeah, this is, yeah.
You could put banners on the front, like at the, uh, soft park.
You can do the opening, why don't you do the opening?
All right, appreciate it.
Sure, thanks.
And I do want to say, I really think the IT, uh, here in Vigo County did a tremendous job with this, because it's amazing, amazing what they went through, and they, they caught most of the stuff and saved us a lot of time, and did a great job, and they don't get many, uh, kudos for that stuff, but, uh, that they did a great job.
Bill Verdin, I was just standing up here, I, when I was lobbying for nineteen years at the State House, I fought what is currently going on in a study committee, I think it's tomorrow with the raising of truck weights.
Yeah.
And I think you guys need to get involved with that.
What are that, what are your thoughts on it, Bill?
The problem is this, the whole time I lobbied, I tried to get across to people that a truck is eighty thousand pounds. The truck weighs thirty thousand. The weight, the cargo they carry is twenty-five tons, takes four trucks to make one railcar. Back then, they were trying to raise the truck weights to a hundred and twenty-four thousand pounds, which made almost one truck equal to one carload of railroad tracks. Your roads are not made to haul this kind of weight, and when you start, it's all about money, and they'll tell you it's all about money, and said in the paper today that they're trying to lower the cost of transportation, which is fine, but most of these facilities are on back roads, you don't build these roads to this kind of, this kind of weight, and when you start moving weights, and I used to tell people, it's called discrimination when you single out one, uh, company and say, this company is the only one that can haul this excessive weight. They're going to come back and say, somebody else is going to want steel, aggregate, anything, and then you're going to have people hauling like they do in Michigan, and when I, when this went through the State House, I, at that time, I was running trains through Michigan into Windsor, Ontario. You should see the roads, they all have.
They're all cuffed in the middle?
They're all cuffed, where the, where the, the truck tires are. Doesn't sound bad until it's snowing, and then it's a cluster, I mean, it's a real mess. The problem, you guys need to call, you know, Senator Ford and Representative, uh, Heath relates to the amount of tonnage that is going to be moved from rail cars to trucks. You don't want that. I mean, you don't want them to move that, that tonnage. Because they will. Because, you know, I'll relate a story to you. I was in the Teamsters, had a Teamster guy in Northern Indiana say that he was all for this. But I called him on the phone and I said, why did you put a letter out in support of this? He said, well, it's going to help us. I said, how many drivers you got now? 10. I said, you're going to have five. You have less employment, more weight, you're going to tear up the roads, you're going to move cargo from railroads to trucks for the sheer reason it's cheaper and doesn't do us any good. You know what I mean? Doesn't do us any good. So, you guys need to pay attention to that. And you need to articulate that to our representatives in that it's not doing us any good. And I'm a firm believer that local government's saying, hey, this is going to tear up our roads. And you know it. We never built these roads for this kind of weight. So, anyhow, that's...
Hey, Bill, two rolls of steel, right, are allowed now? Is that what it is? Two coils?
Yeah.
And that gets almost 120,000?
But they can, they can only run...
With the truck?
That's on the, the, whatever it's called, the Interstate 90, where they can run from. They have to stay on 90. They can, they built the road from the plant to the interstate. And they can run to, I think, Ohio and Illinois both, and Michigan all have excessive weights for steel.
I watched a truck hauling a load of bricks run a red light yesterday, heading north on 41, going through Ohio. And he, I knew it, I was alerted to it because the guy was laying on his horn. And he just went right through it. But he, you know, let everybody know, I'm running this. And I, so I was thinking about that. But, you know, living in Terre Haute, some of you may find this hard to believe, we have a lot of opportunity to watch trains go by. I mean, a lot. And yesterday, I was at a stop with me and about 1,000 other people, right around 5 o'clock, the roads were pretty much shut down because of the slow-moving train that went through Terre Haute. I was about, about a half an hour sitting there.
Southbound train, wasn't it?
It's awful. Yeah.
You know why?
But that's progress, progress.
Never forget this in Terre Haute. I tell everybody this. Southbound trains are stopping. They're coming in, into the yard.
Right.
Northbound trains are leaving town. So, if you're sitting there and it's going north, wait for it. If it's going around the damn thing.
Well, now...
And I never wait on them.
Now, the joke is that we built the overpass and that there's still a rail line right in front of it on the west side. But, but I know that line is the INRD line, and it's not used that often. But what I'm getting at is, I don't see bricks on trains. Are they stored inside the cars? Or, because I would assume that they would be stacked on a platform.
They can run them in boxcars.
They're inside them. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, there's, they can, really, bricks are locally hauled most of the time.
By truck?
By truck. And that's why, and our, our brick factory currently is down by the dump down there, you know?
That's called landfill. We don't call that a dump. Sanitary landfill.
You know, really, interestingly enough, you can call...
Call it anything you want.
So, the whole point, all the roads around that directly become involved in overweight trucking. 159, Woodsmall...
Oh, we know.
Stucky. I mean, you guys are the ones going to pay for this. And the state doesn't seem like they want to step up and give money to people that are on, I mean, up north, when they did the steel thing, they designated certain roads that had to be designated to haul the steel on. And then, they made sure that those roads, when they built them or re-improved them, that they were enforced to, to handle the excessive weight.
Isn't there a rail line right behind that plant or nearby it?
Sure.
So, but...
There's rail lines everywhere. And that's right down nearby, the old Blackhawk Coal Mine.
Are those bricks being put on rail cars? Or do you know?
I don't think they are.
Okay.
I think everything haul out of rural.
Yeah.
All right, that's just...
Thank you. Thanks for your expertise, Bill.
No other comments? Thank you all for coming.
You really want to end it now?
Yes.
This is nice.
[laughing]
Oh, there's Kevin.